Making home improvements doesn't have to be complicated. At West Tennessee Bank, we have the money you need to make the upgrades you want. Come talk with our experienced loan officers and tell us how much you need. West Tennessee Bank, a division of the Cato County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.
First item is approval of amendments in the January meeting. Did all y'all get those in the mail? Did you get that, John Warren?
I got it.
Before I start this, how many of y'all got y'all's agenda in the mail?
That's all I got, Mr. Jefferson.
That's what it was.
I think you got it.
Alright, I just, that horse didn't cross the creek.
Horse didn't cross the creek.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve the amendments in the last week. Motion to second to approve the amendments in the last week in January. Is there discussion? If not, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion carried. The next is approval of amendments. If there is any, I think the school has got four or two approved.
We have one.
Okay.
It's, uh, East Chester and West Chester qualify for summer read to be read during. If you haven't read it in the paper, it's an opportunity for those students at risk of not reading at grade level to get some extra attention and support this summer. So that's the monies that we have. It's, uh, ten thousand dollars will be for that grant.
Motion to second to approve this request. Amendment is presented. Is there any question? If not, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion carried. Thank you. If I may, I want, if it's okay with y'all, I want to DPA from the, from the agenda just a minute. I put it in. We've got, uh, Richard Jason Framed here. Uh, he wants to talk to you a few minutes about the, uh, Henderson Arts Commission. And he's got a, a big boy scout meeting in front of his head. It's going on right now. He needs to get back there. So, does anybody have a problem with him presenting this at this time?
Okay. Thanks, guys. Alright, I've got some papers. Can I go ahead and do those papers? Alright, um, so about eight years ago, we started something called the Henderson Arts Commission. And, uh, we've been doing arts in the alley. We've been bringing people in like, uh, Beal's Tribute Band. We brought in, uh, like a Patsy Cline tribute. Brought in some different concerts and kind of different things throughout the past eight years. And it's been a, a monthly thing from March to September to have arts in the alley and things like that every month throughout the, throughout the year. Um, well, through March through September, all those months. The reason we, we kind of started this eight years ago, and the reason we did this is because we, we love our community and we want to do whatever we think would make it better. And one of the things was to, to just bring the arts to our community. We noticed that there weren't a lot of arts in our surrounding communities. We want to bring it here to enrich, educate, entertain people in our community. And, uh, we've seen this impact. We've seen it from people in Jackson who say, "Man, we need to get down there and check things out. We need to see what you're doing." We need to, uh, we need, as a matter of fact, the AMP that started now that goes every Friday in Jackson, uh, at the AMP, that was kind of a, a spawn off from a discussion that we had about Henderson Arts Commission and Arts in the Alley. So, that's kind of an interesting little tidbit. But, um, we've seen people in other states who even comment on our Facebook page. "We love what's going on. We think it's great. We wish we could be there." We've even had people that made their final decisions to move here to Henderson and Chester County based on what they've seen on Facebook. And that was like their, their tipping point. "We love what's going on and things that are going on in bigger cities that are actually happening there in Henderson and Chester County." So, uh, thank you for doing that. Um, and the bottom line is, we want to bring more people here. We want to get more people involved. Uh, we want to create, you know, happy citizens. We want people to move here. We want to increase our tax base. It just helps so much in every way. So, um, that's kind of the reason. Well, this year, we've decided to expand. We've noticed a trend over the past two years in Arts in the Alley, which was that third Thursday event, uh, where attendance is declining and the cost of bands is increasing. It's increasing past the point where we can afford to pay. So, uh, under, under our current scheme. So what we decided as a board, uh, in the offseason this year is to scrap what we have been doing and create something new. Um, that something new is, is in this yellow section here, you'll see this dotted, there's four main events that we want to do this year. Uh, starting off with, uh, the kickoff event April 14th, which is an interactive outdoor movie, which is Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. Uh, you know, interactive movies, things happen during the movie. So whenever they say gobstoppers, everybody hits gobstoppers. You know, at different points in time, everybody can stand up and turn around and sit back down again. So it's just something fun for the kids and entertaining for adults. Uh, so that's, that's the bottom line. Trying to get people excited about the arts. Uh, so another thing in May and June, uh, is like a songwriter's event, or a concert, or a festival, or something like that. They don't know how much money we raise. We'd love to do a festival in Gene Record Park. We'd love to bring rides down. We'd love to bring art artisans down. We'd love to have two or three musicians. Um, I mean, we've got contacts with people. Uh, who knows if they could come down or not, if it would work, but it would be great if we could do that. All that depends on funding and how much we can actually, actually secure by then. Um, the third thing that's on the list is the Theater Experience Camp for Kids, which is, this is the third year that we've done it. Uh, two other years we've worked with Becky Harte and, and kind of done something there. Uh, by doing Aladdin and The Lion King, this year it's going to be Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. Imagine how that worked out. Um, so this year, uh, they're doing, and because of our previous success the past two years, just a couple of weeks ago, Becky Harte was able to, uh, put on a play, Law and Order, or Fairy Tale, or something or other, um, with middle school and elementary school kids. And that was done because of the success of this theater camp. Uh, there's been a lot of people that have been excited about, a lot of kids. And she even mentioned to us this year that, um, with Willy Wonka coming, it might be an issue where, um, they have more people than they actually have parts. So she's going to kind of figure, try and figure this thing out with the kids and how we can make this play. So with success comes growing pains. And, uh, that's hopefully what we're facing this year. And in the, the fourth event, the main event, is the Million Dollar Quartet. Now, what this is about is, uh, it takes Elvis, uh, Jerry Lee Lewis, Carl Perkins, and, um, who am I forgetting? Johnny Cash, that's it. So it takes four of them, then the one event that they were in the recording studio in Memphis and Sun Studios, and it, it plays on that. So you've got a, a big huge concert, a tribute concert to that day, that event. Uh, this thing is toured. It's been in the Orpheum. It's been in, in Chicago. It's been all over the place. And we're scheduled to be on their calendar on September 27th, which is a Thursday before barbecue festival. Okay? Now, we're scheduled right now. The one thing that we're looking for is funding. I'm scared to sign a contract for that thirty thousand dollar event without having the funds in place or know for a fact where my funds are going to come from. So what we've already done is we've raised money, uh, from different businesses and individuals, and we've raised, um, a ballpark of ten thousand dollars with commitments for, from three or four other people to do more. And I, I've only scratched the surface on asking people. Uh, but what I'm doing here tonight is I'm asking the county. And what I'm doing on Thursday night is I'm asking the city. And what I'm going to continue to do this week is ask people, because our contract is due this week. We've got to put in a bid. We've been trying to do, we've got to put in a bid, and I, well, anyway, it is what it is. So I'm trying to see if we can find the, the funds to make this happen. Now, what we've done the past eight years in the Henderson Arts Commission is we've done it one hundred percent volunteer. There's been a few businesses that have pitched in to help, um, and it's, there's been a lot of personal funds that have been put into the Arts Commission. And we've never asked the city or the county for funding. We've never formally asked for the city, from the city or the county for funding. So that's what we're doing this week. What we're asking for is a fifteen thousand dollar sponsorship from the county. Uh, what that will do is that will help us secure the Million Dollar Quartet. It will help us secure and move forward in some of these other things that we're, we're doing. We're looking at a season that optimistically is a forty-five thousand dollar budget, uh, something like that. So we're, we're looking for some help. So what kind of questions we got?
The Henderson Arts Commission, who, who is the view and how many?
Well, I'm the president, and it's, I think, six people on our board right now. Uh, there's Chrissy Montague, who's on the board. Uh, I don't know if you know Brad Montague, kid president. So Chrissy Montague is there. Rachel Irvin is, uh, she's in theater, she graduated with a theater degree. She works at Eighth Day right now. She's on the board. Um, we have Emily Irvin, who's different spelling, but same pronunciation. She works in our office. She's a graphic designer, a photographer. Then we have Cliff and Sherri Thompson. Cliff Thompson is, uh, Dr. Thompson at Free Harvey, and he does the theater program there. And his daughter is Becky Harte, who works in theater with the, the middle school kids. Uh, and then Sherri Thompson, who, uh, is a counselor, a psychologist, does, does that kind of her own business. So those are the people who are on the board as we speak.
For your estimate, count it for fifteen. Y'all still want to see it for fifteen?
That's correct. That's correct. And we've already raised, uh, well, we've raised about ten thousand with the promise of, with the potential of being twelve to fifteen. We're not sure, but that's what we've got right now.
Wouldn't we need to turn this over to the Budget Committee? Let them study and see what's available? Would that be right or still?
On the top is, he's cut for, he's cut for TAM right now. That's, that's the biggest thing. That's why we, he thought we didn't meet up till further over the month, but of course we may have heard it this month.
If we decided to do this, where?
Alright, well, you need to take out a fund balance, but your fund balance is okay. I have not spent any of my fifty thousand dollars yet. We can take fif- we can use fifteen of that if y'all so desire. I won't have a problem with that. If anything is for the kids, I'm going to be for them. And, uh...
Anything else that we can add to the money that's allocated for you for the weekend?
Not right now, because I never know what's going to pop up.
Justin, how do you fund your operation in the previous years?
Um, previous years, uh, at, at the very beginning, it was a lot of personal funds and private group funds that went in and helped things out. Um, here lately, we've been able to get a couple of grants from, uh, from the state agency, ABC Grants. Uh, we're going to continue to apply for grants this year like we always do. This may open us up to apply for larger grants. We're going to continue to do that. Um, and then there's also been some businesses like Teak Knosall Mart. They, they donate all their chicken for that last Arts in the Alley that helps us raise enough money to get started the next year. That was our big problem the first two or three years, and then they started doing that, and we've been able to get started, and that kind of pushed us for the next year. But it's really been hand to mouth flipping burgers. We flip burgers and make about, you know, from three hundred to four hundred dollars, and then we gotta pay three hundred and, three hundred to four hundred dollars for the band, and that's it.
What's the estimate of all this that you can, that's what this is about?
The, I'm, I'm estimating the budget now is ballpark forty-five. Okay? Now, the potential here is, if we plan on doing the Million Dollar Quartet in Lloyd Auditorium, okay? So we've already got, I mean, everything's not in stone. We've already got verbals that say that's not a problem. We plan on selling tickets for forty dollars for the floor, uh, and college students can buy a ticket for twenty-five dollars up in the balcony. Uh, or if we happen to sell out nearly two thousand tickets on the floor, then they'll be going to the balcony. Uh, the hope is that we sell a thousand tickets. We not only make our money back from this, but we're able to fund two thousand nineteen and do something similar. So that's the hope. Uh, and that's what we're, that's our goal. That's what we're trying to do. Our, our numbers are modest. We've also talked with, um, Arts in McNary County and Sean Pitts, and what they can do to help support this and bring in. You know, Rockabilly Highway is forty-five and connects Corinth and, or, excuse me, connects Tupelo and Jackson. And that's the Rockabilly Highway, and that's who we're talking to here. So we've already, uh, contacted Corinth and let them know what we're planning on doing so we could hopefully see a lot of people come in through this, uh, Rockabilly Highway for this event.
Do I understand what you're saying? This fifteen thousand likely just be seed money that could be perpetuated?
That's exactly right. That's the hope.
You're not expecting to be recurring expense?
I'm not expecting it to be a recurring expense. That is correct.
Unless you make off the last one you had at Williams Auditorium. I'd say both knives, there's a good grab both knives.
Um, are we talking about the, uh, the Beal's Tribute?
No.
He Hall is not part of us.
No. Well, I think y'all just, the plague just got moved happening.
Oh, now, okay, so the, the play was not part of us, but that was, um, that's part of the middle school. That's what they did. The, the, I mean, the school system can probably talk more about this, but the, they saw the, the interest and saw the need, so, um, the money that we raised helped them do that. And also, they brought in other monies and I don't know all the details, but the school system did that themselves.
And I assume that you, if, if we approve money, you give it to the county?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
That's something, that's something that we're requiring you.
That, that is not a problem. Uh, we can give it to you. I mean, I don't know how you want it, but we can do it that way. Doesn't matter. Oh, yeah, we can do nothing.
Where is this request?
I'll say it.
Motion to make second to approve this request. Uh, I would, I would also like to add to it, if that's okay with you, Chris, is, is that we give fifteen, get the city to give fifteen. Because if you get our fifteen, or get their fifteen, you can't do it anyway, can you?
Game on.
Is that okay with you? Is it okay with the second?
What was that, what was your? How did you amend it?
I didn't amend it. I just got to change the motion. If it would, we would give the fifteen, if the city gave the fifteen. And what you're, you're, you're coming out of the fund balance of my money?
That was your problem.
That's fine, I'll be. Alright, is there any questions?
How much do you think you can make off this million dollars?
Um, if all goes according to our projections, about forty billion.
And it's going to cost thirty?
That's correct. Hopefully they'll persuade and allow us to use this same company to bring in another group of some, of similar significance next year.
Do you, uh, do you foresee, uh, people talking with this will be able to spend the money?
I sure do. It'll probably happen at about seven o'clock, which, uh, would hopefully pack our restaurants beforehand, and people will be getting gas and go home afterwards.
I assume that if I'm working, you're pretty going to publicize this.
Well, the more money we have, the more we can publicize.
Because that's, that is the goal.
You're exactly right. The initial goal, uh, as you can see down here on the bottom in the orange section, the media, uh, we plan on, on partnering with, uh, I've already spoken with Charter Media. We plan on partnering with other radio stations, um, uh, to do a trade-out as much as we can. And then when we can't trade out, we intend to, uh, purchase. And we also intend to do some, uh, heavy social media campaigns. But again, that depends on the money we raise, so...
It's not really the question. Get a chance, get, get my address, you can mail me a request, I'll give you some money too.
Is there any other questions? This is not due, ladies, so we don't have to record off, do we? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion carried. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for what you guys do. Thank you very much.
Alright. Did you have something you'd like to address the commission with? Actually, I can get your now to the, my camera. Thank you very much for that.
That's okay. Sometimes I forget to. This is Carl Hartman here on the local American Legion Post, and they're looking for our support to send four young men from our community to Boy's State. If you're not familiar with Boy's State, it's a civics, uh, program that lasts in this particular, along with May twentieth through the twenty-sixth. Uh, four individuals get selected from the school system in cooperation with staff from the school superintendent, in which we will, uh, interview them, go through a process of selecting these four individuals to send to the Boy's State. Uh, the cost of the Boy's State is three hundred and fifty dollars per individual that we're sending four. So we would be looking for up to fourteen hundred dollars to support that, but any portion of that that you can provide would be appreciated. Any questions?
I think in the past, I've given them five hundred dollars every day. Just myself, so you know, it's, it's whatever y'all want to do, if you want to give five hundred. Motion to make second to give approval for five hundred dollars for the Boy's State. Is there any questions? This one, I've come out of the fund balance. It's like my fund balance stopped when I was over at railroad call on that day.
Johnny Carter?
Yep.
Terlo?
Yeah.
Larry Blackstock?
Yeah.
Al McInnes?
Yeah.
Jackie Buck?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Ann Moore?
Yes.
Russell Blight?
Yes.
Buddy Richardson?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyatt?
Yes.
Joseph Malero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Chris Simmons?
Yes.
Mary Bell?
Yes.
John Wel?
Yes.
Michael Island?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Can tell you this, but it's, you know, they're, they're free heart, liaison.
Yeah, that's the liaison.
I really appreciate you.
Yeah, same thing.
Thank you for helping us.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jordan?
Fifty-five years ago, I was probably in Boy's State.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. How long ago? Fifty-five years.
Coming to hell, right? I went to Boy's State a couple years ago.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is appoint a member to the Hatchet River Library Board. They sent me a note, and they would, uh, says, "Please appoint Mr. Gene Smith to Hatchet River Regional Library Advisory Board." Motion to make second to give a, 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 to Mrs. Gene Smith to the Hatchet River Regional Library Advisory Board. Is there any question? Is anyone else with anybody? If not, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion carried. The next is the physical strength efficient government, physical confirmation letter, three-star letter. This is something I have to do every year, is tell y'all that we have a, a, uh, debt policy that's filed with the Comptroller's Office. And, uh, that's about it. But the easiest, we do have filed with, with the, uh, Comptroller's Office. I need approval of this letter. Motion to make second to give approval to the physical strength letter. Is there any discussion? If not, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion carried. The next is a resolution declaring intent of Chester County to reimburse itself. I know it's a mouthful, it sound like we're going to sell bonds, but we're not selling bonds. The school system, I'm trying to get ahead of myself, you holler. The school system is in the process of adding on our buildings, small, small buildings, adding on some buildings. They're going, they have deep money and they're fund balance to do that with. All this does is if they run short of money in the fund balance, when they get through with this, we can sell bonds, or they can raise money, whatever. But this is the only way that you can go back into the fund balance, is if we, if we approve this resolution to put it back into the fund balance. Is that about, Tom?
Yes, sir. There's no money expected out of it.
Right, there's no money expected out of it. This is good for eighteen months. Motion to make second to approve the resolution. Is there any question? If not, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion carried. Next is a resolution. This is a resolution that says that the county, resolution to require the county board of equalization members and county board hearing officers to complete annual continuing education. And we can set the hours wherever we want to, but there's a minimum of four hours for this. So my recommendation that you approve this resolution with a four-hour, that'll, that'll be better. Okay. A four-hour, uh, plan on this, on this. Here, sir. Got a motion second to approve this resolution?
The C pass, yeah, I think it's four-hour and C pass.
Yes. I guess the C pass hit better, you know?
Uh, no, it would be the DPA, Cochran's Office.
Cochran's Office. With no charge for it, is that right?
No, that's why we want to keep it at four-hour minimum.
Yeah. Alright. Is there any questions? If not, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion carried. Last, I got one more resolution here, didn't have on the agenda, but I go ahead and do it anyway. This one is for the West Tennessee River Basin Authority. They get money, a lot of money from the state. They have been, which are not reoccurring, and they're asking each county in West Tennessee to approve this resolution. Asking the state to make this money, uh, every year, reoccurring, is what I'm trying to say.
Would we approve that resolution?
Motion to make second to give approval to the resolution for the West Tennessee River Basin Authority. Is there any questions? I guess I went through that pretty fast. If not, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, motion carried.
Actually, I just wanted to come back, and, um, you remember the last time that I was here, I came in asking for money, providing equipment, and we kind of left things in limbo. This commission was gracious enough to approve the purchase of that equipment, but we had left it up to the budget subcommittee to determine exactly how that went. And, um, so I just felt like I needed to come back and tell y'all the rest of the story since we kind of left it there. Uh, you remember that we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in federal pile of funds, and then we hit earmark of about a hundred and sixty-two thousand, we'll look over, um, for this equipment. So we had a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to spend, and I'm happy to report that we were able to get the equipment that we need for a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So we will actually not require any funding from the county for doing this. So just wanted to, again, extend our appreciation for letting you know that, that I feel good since everybody else has come on in, but I, I appreciate it, but we did not pay it.
Doing good work.
Oh, thank you. And also, just to remind, most of the people in this room are impacted, and the qualifying deadline for the honest election is April fifth at twelve noon. So we've so far issued forty-six petitions, and we've had seventeen that have qualified, so we've not done someplace and are interested in running this thing.
Any question for Karen? Alright, next thing I got, uh, about three or four meetings ago, I was, uh, asked to talk to the people on the property at the corner of, uh, over here where the, uh, He Hall trucks used to celebrate, the corner of, um, Eggvale and O45, old church street, excuse me, South Church Street, you know, over by me. I've talked to her two or three times, and she finally gave me a price on it today. I'm gonna pass that on to y'all, this, you know, if you want to purchase it, you, uh, it's something we probably need, but she probably took it at eighteen thousand dollars. Do you say that motion, Russell?
Yeah. I think it's a piece of property.
Point, uh, point three-one-six or point three-six-one, I forgot which one. It's a little less than four tenths of an acre. Point, uh, point three-one-six or point three-six-one, I forgot which one, it's two, that's the fourth answer, right?
Well, it'd be, it'd be working, uh, oh, yeah.
Now, this money will have to come out of fund balance, so we had our roll call vote on it. Is there any other questions on it? This is where I would like to put the building for the new house, uh, uh, building. Where we, you add to it, we got a couple of hand out there. Do we got a couple of hand out there, Jerry?
It's just a good place for access at corner of, you know, forty-five.
And, uh, talked to the road supervisor, they again, I looked at the, of course, there's three, two or three ditches in there, but you can put pipes and those, uh, get them out there, so that won't be a problem. Is there any questions? This will have to be a roll call vote.
Johnny Carter?
Yes.
Peter Love?
Yeah.
Larry Blackstock?
Yeah.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Ann Moore?
Yes.
Russell Blake?
Yes.
Buddy Richardson?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyatt?
Yes.
Joseph Malero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Chris Simmons?
Yes.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
John Well?
Yeah.
Mike Allenman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have. I'd like the sheriff has something he'd like to speak to you about for just a second.
I just want to speak with you just a minute. Um, I don't evolve heard about all the student violence and all the talk going on about violence, what we should do. I'm on the next level, Tennessee Sheriff's Association, we were number five third this morning, the legislature intended on presenting a bill allowing teachers to carry guns. Myself and Tennessee Sheriff's Association is a whole dis group that told anybody in our book that we spoke with this group that, um, I believe that, in my, uh, belief is that Department of Education statewide is a whole dis group that, I know that Mr. Gill is dis group that. I don't know the answer to that, to this, I had intentions of coming tonight and asking for something, but at this point, uh, respect that, I don't know what the, the government today created a school security task force. And they with the intentions of giving us some suggestions, again, that they suggested the legislature, um, bill was supposed to be presented, wasn't office, wasn't a file. But it, uh, suggested putting one teacher, there were seventy-five kids with a gun. But twelve high school leaders, somewhere around eight or nine kids at the high school, and put twelve pictures. And one of the teachers said if they qualify for a gun, they, they would qualify to carry a gun inside this group. They don't allow our reserve officers to do that. We came to the reserve, and the reserve has provided us, and they have covered the training, a lot more extensive training than that. So we, we believe there's way more than my abilities. Uh, again, we believe that the legislature is fixing, making us do something. The National School Resource Association, uh, they suggest one, um, resource officer at every school. I, I, I honestly, I don't know that that's the answer, that would put us higher seats because I, I don't know that, there's no, I can't stand up here and be honest with you, people and say that we have a debt in every school that we could one hundred percent ensure so. There's too many barriers to that, and, and I have talked with other people about some of them. Um, I can say we need help, or we will have to have help, and it's going to come down to the vote and win. I would also like to say at this point, in all reality, the commission pays nothing for our school resource officer. Mr. Gill replaced it all, you know. I think actually I paid a hundred and twelve dollars out of my budget for our school resource officer. We get the bill, it'll be on during the summer. But part of that is for the, the resource officer training, because they have it in summer. Kyle Conrads is the school resource officer at this point. And he is nice enough that when he goes to law games and things, takes some of that off him, so not all of it. We paid overtime on what he filed, what he goes down, we have to pay. But nonetheless, there's a lot of school superintendents that don't pay nothing, and they're not required by them. So we're blessed to have one to have. Uh, which I'll say, Mr. Gill thought had to do that. He paid, he paid less than that for some time when we had our budget crisis here. But damn, hell, we came and told him we couldn't, we couldn't do it more than what he was giving us, and he ended up loving to do more than that. I just felt the need, I, I felt the responsibility to come pay off, that I am fixing to be put in a position to have that. Um, again, we will fight to the nail to keep teachers from having guns. Um, I just don't think it's wise, and then I don't think, all the sheriff's chairs agree. And I said the sheriff's association, the whole, Department of Education is a whole statewide agreement, that, that, that should be, that should be, that should happen.
Again. Not clear, what about if you have certain ones that are qualified or trained? Certainly, I don't think all teachers, most teachers would not want to have them, so.
Well, I think you get into deep subjects, I'd be talking about training with, uh, you know, working with the carries guns on their side, uh, you know, and, and if they, if they have, if they put them in a drawer, uh, students have access to them there.
As far as you know, is, is the legislation that we have made me record?
The legislation that was supposed to have been, that we were told Thursday that it's fully filed, uh, yes, well, maybe the requirement, and, and of course the requirement, what this initial bill said was that Mr. Gill would have the option of backing out. But if he backed out, which in my opinion would be his, the wisest thing he could do. But when he backs out, uh, it puts it on my backs to, to provide the safe security. And, and, and I would not come up here with recommendations to get teachers. And I, and actually some teachers that I, that I think is with problem, uh, and they don't have a problem with that. I, I think that you have a bigger problem getting teachers to agree to it, uh, than, than any.
Uh, uh, I guess the question that I was going to ask, each county go have the option to back out of this?
Yes, that, that was the initial bill, that, that, when we came in, we didn't have it, still had nothing filed, they met all weekend, everybody, um, trying to find. Um, I know the bill had been amended, so as of this morning, I never visited, they never did post it on internet, so I told them I haven't read it without being there. Uh, I know that it was amended somewhat, uh, but I don't know, I just heard through the great fine amendments that were made. I said, what was originally supposed to have been filed, uh, said the school board, or the school superintendent could opt out. And I'm not saying because he said, definitely, if, if the policy issues, that's exactly what I mean. But when you went on that line, it puts it on us. And, and, and again, I'm saying it because he said, but, uh, I don't think it's irresponsible to any, I think it's responsible to the digital escape, yes. And if there's an issue about school safety, it should follow from the sheriff, government.
When you say would follow you, what do you mean by it would follow?
Well, the, the, part of that bill was that, uh, the labels, um, that I would have to go to the high schools and take out what I picked. Obviously with some of their entry. And, but then, I said, again, they had an handicap, everything, they were qualified. And then allowing them to follow the sheriff and the sheriff department. The initial bill said to follow the sheriff, uh, personally. That was amended Friday to put just to give the county and the sheriff's association in this year. Um, and I accept that responsibility for everything that I spent working through, did when I was left. But I don't think any teachers at that would, would be part of it.
I, I agree with you, does, does the county and the city board patrol was still there?
Well, at this point, it's.
Pretty regular basis.
Well, we, we have, I said a full time to the resource officer, and it's all big, that, I mean, I think at this point, um, well, I hate to say recharge some thirty-five gift that you don't, uh, with official charges and, and a lot of those we don't charge. They did, because Mr. Bell was fully aware that he was in the research office for years, but, um, in other words, Kyle Conrads has his plate, uh, he, he, and the next at the high school, and then you got Jack's Creek and everybody else.
Did you say Kyle can't carry guns?
No, I said he, no, Kyle.
Kyle's not a law officer, he's a.
No, Kyle could do, exactly.
Your volunteer service.
I was alerting, you know, I was trying to, they, um, I talked to some people, so, yeah. Kyle has, I'll be, do, you know, we, as a sheriff's department, we go around the school, we go to the one in the north, and a different pattern, and the six.
We did, that's, our, our day shift officers do the same thing, we, we go in one or two schools a day, every, every uniform officer that's on duty, plus patrol, plus we have another security measure we've implemented, but I was saying what Steve.
See, I don't know where, but, um.
Well, what, what can we do as a legislative body to, to, to help you, Sheriff?
Well, and.
Had a six.
Mr. Blake, I, I, I had full intentions of coming here and asking, uh, for another day. At this point, um, I, I think that we would all live there by waiting, seeing what, what the government's, what the task force suggests, you know, because their vision, especially suck the mandate, and, and there's no better, and I don't know how stiff the mandates are being, uh, and I don't know.
I heard there would be a bill, uh, you know, pay for up to thirty-four million dollars worth of SRO statewide.
Yeah, that's been told to them, but, um, and I said that I'm on the next level, maybe that's Friday, we hadn't seen it, uh, so even, uh, drafted. You know, we, we, that's one reason I said, wait, I had a.
Place of gathering population.
Back door, gathering population, and, uh, the, uh, student population. Um, of course, um, the former president put out much money, and we, or we are, um, ten drones, Tennessee School Resource Association, and national school resource official certified. And I'm not sure if he is nationally now, but we have it. And, um, but we didn't qualify for any of that, for, uh, nobody, nobody can say this. We, we weren't well trained, so they made it so hard to get, it wasn't easy for us to fly. Uh, there's smoke cannons supply, and then give, and, and we need then, and the, the big cannons, we use and cannons, and all of them, the, 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 Wilson County. Being scanning has eighty-four guns, and officers all.
Larry, you have, you have been, uh, some people call in and say someone's, someone's acting funny, or how does that work for you, just again?
There's a bunch of laughing.
Not just children.
Right, that's right. We, we, yes, Rick, we, we follow up on everything, plus Facebook. And on Facebook sometime, I just, we just want to have some violence at school, and we had to trace down, and, and that's T-10, I believe, trace get down to that book. And, um, the next day, we had extra presidents at school, and we tried to, um, we have a Facebook page, and obviously dispatch, um, and most people have one of our simple numbers, so again, we can call them off now, uh, trying to, people that are concerned about children. The task force today includes a lot of, uh, uh, teachers and mental health officials. They have to be on the task, on the government task force to, to give us some suggestions. Um, which now, leaving mental health is a big part of all, you know, there's a jail out there, the, uh, Western State, um, all the facility, reception. They don't deserve anything, they got no, I'm looking through where I put. And that's it, and that's sad and true, right, for sure, that we deal with.
Well, along your path, Larry, and I know this, to make a return after all these problems we've had in the last couple of years of shooting. Oh, and we may have to have four people, maybe more than one deputy or whatever to resolve something. What about the scanners, like you got out your doors there, would that help in the main interest of the school?
Well, it would, but you do have to man it. So, oh, there you go, um. And, and that just creates, I don't know now, that you know, schools, I think the schools, there you go, could I stand up here and say something that Mr. Gill could do more, or something that we could do more at this point? I, I don't know, because if they keep the doors locked, you gotta go through, you gotta push the button to get in inside the school.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know specifically. I can say for himself, yes, people have, have a debt in every class, in every school, make it to a high school, anyone else, but we never pay enough.
Somebody's been in the territory, never stopped.
It's not like bad, never stopped, and, and, um, you know, there's so many different scenarios to that, um. If you make it skewed, the schools, it's safer, it's harder, it's harder, it's a prison, uh, they get along with us. And, and, and that, that's, that's sad, that's true.
You can only harden targets so much, uh, as you and I discussed earlier today. Uh, if, if you look at what, you know, what started this up, and what happened before, and I read through that thing multiple times, and respecting someone that's been in juvenile court, work through things. And this county, you know, this department, police department, juvenile court, all the school system, uh, we've responded, not to a shooting, but to the thirty-nine incidents that preceded that, we responded with things of that nature. And, and we took proper courses of action to resolve the issues and took care of it. Uh, it's, generally, these things don't happen, you know, in a battle that is suddenly happening. Somebody does, if every once in a while, you get one that nobody can see, but generally, the ninety-nine percent, uh, if somebody failed way back here. And, and security, like the sheriff said, we can harden schools to the end of the period, uh, and it will cost a ton of money. And it can still, it penetrated, I spent a entire year of my life guarding Fort Meade, Pentagon, and half of those places on the East Coast. And you can study, study, uh, there's still a way around. You harden this spot, then they go there. And the reality is, you gotta find pre, proactively, make sure that these young people, or whoever it is, try to find them before they ever get started. I believe if you got them sitting at the metal detector, and they're armed, I mean, if they're determined, I'll take one good shot, the metal detector's worthless.
I agree.
And, and, and we have the metal detector here, and, and we discussed before we come to this room. We don't, our test level requires to run in the morning before, before start. Um, and we don't have the manpower to run it. We do at times when we have, um, vials, and we know the vials, and no big family members in here, uh, from the victim, suspect, we run it, uh, but we, we don't, we don't have the manpower to run it every time we have to. And again, I know that we've grown a lot, that's just a fact of life, we, we can grow it. But we, I truly believe that we, we give a hundred percent, that we hold them, and, and we're spread clean. And, um, and again, we don't, I don't go every day, but I don't miss it, um, same as the demo, we, we try to be, if possible, at Jack's Creek in the north. Um, we got this to focus on that, you know, the city can respond to all the rest of, and, and probably, possibly be there before we do, or wouldn't be. It's going to, it's a purpose, I have to have a tablet, grab the chicks out, so there's nobody at that rate. Um, have, somebody take that on, I don't know, again, if you can harden it as fast as much as you can, it's still not the case. Again, I, I just felt the obligation to tell the Michigan board that, that there's a hope that you can expect from me being back up here. Uh, I could fix a plate for you or something. Um, and, and, and I don't have the manpower to pretty much anything that justice does. And again, I had the intentions, I told the lady, I was going to go there. So there you go, I think that we all have responsibilities, part of our responsibilities is keep y'all up to date on what's going on. And I thought, I'm, I'm not gonna say anything to the next meeting, I'm not gonna say anything, so, I don't know, I'm not gonna put anything up. But we had a school shooting tomorrow, and stuff, but I'm not sure if I'm gonna do it last night. So I, I want everybody to know that we're staying, and, um, and I know that several other sheriffs are, well, I know that all across the state sheriffs do. Because you've got a few counties where, um, they build a school and, and the county, the sheriff's department funded that SRO that year. So for this new, new school, they went in with an SRO. But that's your big gamble, you know, that's, I would say, we can, Frank, you know, play the role.
Just to, there may already be existence such a thing, is there a formal, uh, committee, uh, I don't know, like, who all totally include, like, the police department, sheriff's department, school, mental health, juvenile court, that maybe once a year just looks at what we're doing for security, and looks for holes, lays the middle gaps, is, actually, it's been against real, real, it's not just emotional response.
I don't know of a formal committee in the county, there's a state committee, basically, that's, uh, that did any, any part of it. So I don't see where that would be a matter of.
Don't you feel like, like the school superintendent, the guy, the council, pretty well, in a small school system like this, well, there's trouble brewing?
I, I think.
You know, they, they pick it up a lot better than, like Florida, like Bigfoot School, if you go.
And I think that, it's just like, Mr. Bell said, that, that the teachers and the superintendent, all the staff, the faculty, the students, they do a fine job in, in coming to us and saying that they think this student has problems, or has some issues, or whatever. And, and today, we have, we have, uh, I guess, nip that bug, but we, we can call them or whatever, and, and we hadn't had any form where we thought that. And we hadn't had any form where we thought that for sure that they had intentions of coming to shoot at school. It's not like that. You know, it's just been a couple of weeks ago, we've been talking about the church safety now for three months. We've been to churches all over the county, and the floor shooting, the birth change, that off the school safety. But they did, a caller called in about the guy who kicked the prisoners when she was at the church of yours. And after interviewing, they truly believe that he had full intentions of shooting at church, that's under that, which is not common in medicine. So it's, it's a reality that it happened, it's exactly any minute, you can tap right in here. And can we prevent it from one of, you give me twenty-five minutes, and then, I don't think you could expect me to stand up here and say that we can prevent it. And we need some help, yes. And I think somebody else would do, but what I feel is the matter, I just discussed this several times, I don't know. And I would like to reserve the right to come back when we get some, some suggestions from that, or amendment from that, whatever they may be. Come back and pass that along to, you know, except you can, you can believe that as much as you talked about that, we were told that I wasn't there, but that the government, they would, that there would be some changes, some serious changes, school safety, recruiting now, and I mean, preferred to perform in the next year. And we believe that, I believe I talked to the mayor, the governor, and all the residents here, we believe that that would be nice. It's wonderful, and we're happy that.
And I'll say this, Sheriff, I know what you're saying, but I'll say it too, it takes time to get somebody hired, or get somebody trained to, to go, it's not life. You might need to find somebody experienced to hire, but as general, where you start talking about hiring somebody, you're talking about, say, several month process to get them hired up, ready to go. Especially if you start talking about trusting the school system. Whenever this man's ready to ask for somebody, he's gonna need a foretelling.
And that's another thing, as hard as you said, like teachers, you have to have two years of rough experience. But like I mentioned, with school resource officers, if y'all, if it comes to going to be hired today, because I had to use one of their today to book a school, or hire a commission officer, hire one today.
You might get beat.
Yeah. But that's another thing, I had two years of rough experience before the state let us send women and carry gun amongst the students. So it's safe to take them to go to, they hire, and they carry them in class, and then we walk them, I think that's crazy. And to put it off on the don't judge campaign, the lone sheriff and sheriff department, to say that the county can rely on that. I mean, I don't think that we, there's no psychological challenge, what they call it. One of the things that's come up, and I didn't mean speaking, it's not one of the things that come up in the legislation, is if they're going on private, does do that, is to require them to have mental evaluation, same as we have there. Miss Godfrey, I go to mental evaluation. Harder to legislate, that he's from Michigan, Seattle, New England, but his response that was, is that wouldn't be helpful, because the teachers have a mindset of teaching, where a vocal, not mindset vocal. So they probably would pass our, our mental evaluation, but that didn't mean, that didn't mean the cops. But they would pass our mental evaluation if we don't do a security game. So I think that kind of contradicts yourself, any sense of saying, well, we're not giving them all that, because they're good passing, but we won't give them guns.
And the danger of that is this, we have silhouetted targets. Like, take the average person, you can give them gun, but until they get the mindset, all you're gonna do is give the bad guy a gun, and they'll stand there with it, let him take it.
Exactly. What I've said is, I'm not a husband, I, I only fire the lady for the second minutes. I don't think they're taking him out of here, but I just wish y'all something nuts in Florida, shoots up, I don't believe it. But I will say, there's people among us that don't need guns. And if there is, it can't, don't need guns. But I'm trying to protect them.
So Sheriff, from your previous part, like you're in jail, mental issue. And anytime that we start looking at it, like you, in your opinion, and maybe Mr. Gillis should get answer this too, square one would be mental health?
Yes, I think that's what I have to have, and I think, tremendously. We had a lady real quick, and y'all probably seen her, walked around hanging, and, and, I'm not sure, Sarah Hicks? Y'all probably seen her, real thin, black lady, walked around there hanging, when she was well, there's no doubt, and I thought, she had issues. We had them complaints on her shooting, they had to put her in jail. We take her for evaluations, yada, yada, and just put her right back. And at this point, Judge Kinsley would have no choice but to lock her up. We give her ten, the judge gave her ten, one time we talked to her, talked to her, she took two of them, it's continued. One day they come, some lady from the lobby, lady Justin said, there's some people talking to you throughout the lobby. Two nice dressed ladies standing there, and said, we're looking for our family, so she came with Sarah Hicks. We called him, and I called him for ten, can you find her? They found her, long for short, end up, she grew up in Hennet County, right over the Hennet, Tennessee, Kentucky, they got all the buildings in Kentucky. When we run through our search for that place, we couldn't find the Tennessee, because she went to school in Kentucky. She had, she had called school, at a community college in Kentucky. Woke up one morning and lost that gun, she had all hours, whatever, and they put her in a reading. She had three days, she called school. And when people say that Jackson Reddick helped her lot, and we talked about it, you know, but they were sincere, they done got her, took her back, that's right, she slept there. But we dealt with her for a year, probably, I guess, it was a big thing, like ten years. But she didn't deserve it back then.
You didn't even know what she was up to, did you?
No, she didn't know, she, but she couldn't tell us nothing. She, she went from a locked facility to halfway home in Kentucky, in Huntington, in Mount Huntington, and ended up in Jackson. That's all they knew, she walked off of Huntington, and she ended up in Jackson. She got hooked up to Southwest Health Resources, and my understanding is they helped her get a park unit, that's amazing. That her, a member of her aunt and her mother, her grandmother, her son's sister was the ones that come here, and they just cried, cried, and Maggie went to revival and lessons, and gave them to pass that flight, or somebody had sent her a motor truck, if you don't have motor truck, this apple, you fall through, look in, like, and get it. And somebody had said, well, she's been arrested here, she's racing that type of justice camp. But she didn't know, she didn't know what that was. Once they talked to her, she kind of knew, and she agreed with one, but they were just crying, and one of the guys. But that's, that's about mental classes, and typically locked her up several times. And not that she didn't deserve, she committed crime, there's no doubt she committed crime, but as far as she deserved to be incarcerated, and we gave that back.
Deserved it with a cure.
Not another cure, but yes, that would have tremendous, if we had, I'm not gonna have to go back and get the school, but I know we have here.
Thank you for the...
We thank you, okay?
It's important, but insert beyond just mental health, I think there are dramatic misconceptions that have become a juvenile, regarding what happens to violent offenders.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-five, thirty years ago, they had secure facilities. When I say secure, in other words, locked in there in some way, they went up in jail, they couldn't walk out. The number of people in the state that are in that kind of facility, they're not in like an detention facility with the county, they're not state, they're just being held pending trial. Those that are actually placed, are children's services custody, that's the view, that's corrections for children, view. Five offenders, next to none of them are actually secured right now. You'd be amazed how often they're in group homes and foster homes. And to just steal cars, drive off, wreck havoc, endanger public and themselves, everyone involved. And I don't know, it's getting worse.
You brought that up, we got Mrs. Gillis on the air program earlier, and yesterday stood there, we got two visitors next to me. They were very, they were very, very late, and registered sexually. Have they, name?
Aggravated robbery, aggravated assault.
And they don't warn them.
They don't, they don't, they refuse to pay for that contract.
I wasn't your job. Bear, yes, I do want to say.
Yes, I apologize, I thought this was already on the agenda for tonight. The commission approved the resolution to educate my board, but they've got to approve the members of my board, so they can be educated.
Okay, we better do that then.
Yes, Bobby Ruth, Billy Schultz, Vicky Dixon, Donnie Patterson, and Charles Dyer are the five members of my local board of equalization.
Will we approve?
Stand by.
Most of you may say we approve it of the board of equalization, meeting members. Any questions? If I can say aye?
Aye.
Both no? Most of you think aye? Anyone else have anything to add to that, say? Bill?
I know I'm about to most unpopular person in just a county, and I sure will be now, but we just heard the sheriff talk several times about his lack of help. I don't like taxes either, but if he needs more help, and I know he does, I'd appreciate it for commissioners to think about it, taxes. I don't like them, no.
I think if he needs the help, you get the help, I don't think, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. But you don't know what he needs, Bill. You don't know what things gonna be, yeah.
But thank you.
Thank you.
I think he knows what he needs, right now, today. I just...
I'm talking about what the state's gonna come to do for the schools, what I'm talking about. He don't know what he...
I'm not even talking about the schools right now. I'm talking about just, just the county protection. I hear, I listen, he has a lot running to do, and the city police do foolish stuff. The most foolish thing I remember of, I have a scam, I listen to. A lady called for this, a city policeman to come out and get a Chihuahua out of her yard along two doors down the street.
I can give you a whole list of movies, God.
I know, but I'm here all the time. I told you I was unpopular, but that's okay, that's okay. Another one, a lady called, I think she was on West One Hundred, to have someone come out and get her fifteen-year-old boy out of bed, go to school. Man!
Oh, yeah, with Drake, with that.
I know, but I, I, I feel for the sheriff, I really do. Because he does, I know he doesn't have the heavy needs. And we spent, you know, spent fifteen thousand dollars for arts, but that, that's fine, if you can afford it. But our protection comes before the arts does.
That art may keep other people out of trouble too, once he can do it something.
It could do that, but we need to be protected too. I thought...
You're one of them.
I thought it was one of them.
Yes, I'll charge the districts.
Yes, sir, we have a few. Catherine M. Vass, Judy Cox, Phyllis Southern, Solomon Whitton, Tadavon Lee War.
Those are true. Most of you may think we approve the charge and issues, does any, any questions? Yes, I can say aye?
Aye.
Both no? Most okay? Is anyone on to me, she hasn't, they want to break us?
I got one, we got birthday for yourself, besides. Don't bring me that.
I had your birthday.
We're not that good. You're gonna go along, Thursday, Thursday.
No, we're sitting, yeah, we got you, everybody can go with that, so. I hear most of you are German.
I'm French.
All French, aye?